All right. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. A little bit of a glitch there. Thank you all for waiting. All right, Jim, if you wouldn't mind starting over and opening the meeting now, I apologize.
Okay, well, for the second time, call a meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission for April 15, 2021 to order. Secretary Megan, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Commissioner Boydston?
Here.
Commissioner Adukas?
Here.
Commissioner McPhail?
Here.
Chair King?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we all rise and say our pledge to the flag? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, now's the time set aside on the agenda for public comments on items not on the agenda. Can the secretary show the procedure for making public comments?
Yes, I have not received any to this point, but I will definitely put that screen up. Commissioner King, would you like me to read this statement?
Yes, please.
This is the April 15, 2021 Planning Commission hearing for public comments relating to Agenda Item Number Four, which is items that are not listed on the agenda. So please email your comments of 250 words or less to planning.pccomments@ventura.org. That's P-L-A-N-N-I-G period P-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S at ventura.org. Please indicate the subject line, the Agenda Item number, and staff will read your comment to the Planning Commission. Comments received after this time has elapsed will not be read as part of the record.
Thank you very much. Megan? I think in the interest of time, while we want to allow time for the public to wait if they'd like to on non-agenda items, I'd like to suggest that we move on to Agenda Item Five and prior to beginning Agenda Item Six, I'll check back to make sure we have no public comments. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Nodding helps. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Five. I have approval of the minutes for the March 4, 2021 meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Adukas, a second by, was that Commissioner McPhail? So we have moved and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Megan, did we need a roll call on that?
I can if you like. I've received five ayes. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we can move along then. Okay, have we received any requests to comment on non-agenda items?
Just double check here. No, we still have not received any requests to speak.
Okay, if we do, please let me know before the end of the meeting and we'll hear them. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. General Plan and Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance Consistency Analysis for the Rio School District's Proposed Future Expansion of Rio Del Valle Middle School. And I think Planner Deutsch has that, if I'm not mistaken. So can we hear from the staff?
Yes. Good morning, Chair King, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Owen Deutsch, project planner. This case concerns a request by the Rio School District for the Planning Division and Planning Commission to report on its proposed acquisition and use of 10 acres of unincorporated land. We received a letter from the...
Owen, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have a lot of static in your audio.
Sorry, just a second. I'll try to address that. Is this any better? I put a filter on.
Much better.
Okay, great.
Well...
We received a letter on this item from the Oxnard Planning Department yesterday, which I will read in relevant part and try to share on my screen. Okay, in relevant part, the City of Oxnard staff is not providing any comments relative to the proposal's consistency or inconsistency with the county of Ventura's policies and regulations. However, the City of Oxnard staff has found the Rio School District's proposal to be inconsistent with Oxnard's policies and regulations, as specified in the attached letter previously shared with the Ventura Local Agency Formation Commission at their meeting of March 17, 2021. So today I will review the requests being made and an overview of the project, discuss its project location and description in greater depth, address the proposed project's conformity with the county's general plan and non-coastal zoning ordinance, and then present our recommended actions for your commission's consideration. On March 9, 2021, the Planning Division received a letter from the Rio School District, which is attached as Exhibit Four. This letter informed the county of the district's intent to acquire a 10-acre portion of APN 1440110-225, which is adjacent to the existing location of Rio Del Valle Middle School. The district proposes to use this 10-acre portion of the parcel, first for bus parking and relocation of transportation facilities, followed by a future expansion of Rio Del Valle Middle School. Pursuant to the Public Resources Code and Government Code Sections cited, which are attached in full as Exhibit One, the Rio School District requests that your commission investigate and report on the district's proposed acquisition and use of the site and that the Planning Division report on conformity of the proposed acquisition, the county's general plan, and non-coastal zoning ordinance. And on April 6, the Planning Division sent a response letter to the Rio School District stating that the proposed project cannot be found in conformity with the general plan and non-coastal zoning ordinance. Staff is requesting today that your commission adopt the resolution making the same findings of non-conformity. The subject parcel is within the Rio Del Norte area plan on Rose Avenue, just north of the City of Oxnard. On the western half of Rose Avenue is the El Rio Residential Area, and on the eastern half is farmland and the Rio Del Valle Middle School. The location of the subject parcel is shown in Exhibit Two. As can be seen, this parcel is an agricultural production. It is owned by KMS Industries, Inc., and there are agricultural accessory structures on site, but not within the 10-acre portion that the district seeks to acquire. The general plan designation of this parcel is agricultural, and the zoning is AE, agricultural exclusive, with a 40-acre minimum lot size. The western half of the parcel is also within the Mineral Resource Protection over there. The subject parcel is also listed on the state's important farmland inventory as being of prime and statewide importance and is within the county's SOAR boundaries and Camberrio-Oxnard Green Belt Agreement and is outside the City of Oxnard's sphere of influence and urban restriction boundary. The county is not commenting on approvals, which may be required from the Ventura Local Agency Formation Commission, except note that these were discussed at a LAFRO hearing held March 17 and in separate correspondence between LAFRO and the Rio School District. From the project description submitted to the county, the first use of this parcel would be for the district to relocate existing bus parking and workroom facilities from their current location on North Vineyard Avenue. These uses would occupy three acres of the 10-acre portion and would include about 16,000 square feet of relocatable structures, 24 bus parking spaces, 26 vehicle parking spaces, and a bus washing station. The parking facilities would also be used as an overflow parking lot for the Rio Del Valle Middle School and would be fenced and included security system. The remaining seven acres of this parcel are proposed for a future expansion of Rio Del Valle Middle School. The district states, however, that it has no current or reasonably foreseeable future plans for this expansion to occur. As stated, the general plan designation of this parcel is agricultural. If we look at policies related to preservation of agricultural resources from the 2040 general plan agriculture element, we can see that the proposed project is not consistent with these policies. Some of the most relevant policies are reproduced here regarding the direction of growth away from productive agricultural land, the protection of important farmland and green belt agreements, and generally avoiding development on productive agricultural land. As mentioned, the zoning of this parcel is agricultural exclusive. The general purpose of this zone is to preserve and protect commercial agricultural lands as limited irreplaceable resource, to preserve and maintain agriculture as a major industry in Ventura County, and to protect these areas from the approachment of non-related uses, which by their nature would have detrimental effects on the agricultural industry. More specifically, as outlined in Section 81054 of the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, parking facilities are only allowed in commercial and industrial zoning, not AE zoning. Schools, elementary and secondary, are also only allowed in residential and commercial zoning with a conditional use permit or planned development permit, but are also prohibited in AE zoning. The request before your commission is to transmit a report to the Rio School District. Because this is not a project and will not result in direct or indirect physical changes in the environment, staff finds this to be exempt from CEQA review. And so based upon the information and analysis provided, Planning Division staff therefore recommends that your commission take the following actions reproduced in full from the staff report. Number one, certify that your commission has reviewed and considered this staff report and all Exhibit Two. And number two, adopt the resolution attached as Exhibit Three that takes the following actions. A, find that the Rio School District's proposed property acquisition and expansion of Rio Del Valle Middle School, as described in Exhibit Four, are inconsistent with Ventura County general plan and non-coastal zoning ordinance. And B, direct that this report be transmitted to the governing board of the Rio School District. Thank you, and we now welcome any questions you may have.
Chair King?
Go ahead.
I'd like to have the Planning Commission consider a brief recess to see if we can confirm if there are any members in the audience online that would like to get a copy of the city's letter. Since we are having trouble posting it to Granicus, because we're in Granicus right now, we want to be able to make sure that we give that opportunity. So I'd like Chair to consider making that request out to the public to email to our web, excuse me, our email address. We can maybe show that again on the screen, Owen, when you showed the original one. And we could take maybe five minutes and see if someone would like to email in a request to receive the letter, and we can send it out very fast, and then there'd be the opportunity for any public comment when you get to that point on your agenda for this item.
Director Ward, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and without objection, we'll recess for five minutes. By my reckoning, we have gone the requisite five minutes. Is there any reason why we can't reconvene? I see none.
Megan, if you can confirm if we've received any email correspondence?
I still have not received any email correspondence regarding this item.
You're on mute.
Okay. Thank you. Real quick question. We are back in session, by the way. Real quick question for County Council Barnes. Are you there, Mr. Barnes?
I am here. Yes, good morning.
Okay, I don't know if it makes any difference at all, but the notice that was on the screen referred to Agenda Item Four. We are in Agenda Item Six. Does that make any difference? What's 11?
You know what? I didn't notice that what referred to Agenda Item Four?
The screen giving the public information on how to submit comments.
No, I think we should be fine. And you just let everyone know now, so that, you know, everyone's on notice that the wrong item was conveyed before. We're actually on Item Six, and so if people want to submit comments on Item Six, then they should do so now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff from the commission? Don't all jump at once. Okay, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Deutsch, if you don't mind. In the staff report, you indicated that, I think you indicated that regardless of our findings and report to the school district, that the school district could proceed to acquire the property. Is that correct?
County council may wish to speak to this more, but that only applies in certain circumstances, which we don't believe would apply in this case.
Okay, Mr. Barnes, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, you know what? A question that is in my mind, and I'm not sure if anyone from the school district's going to be here, is whether they've done environmental review on their proposal yet. And maybe Owen knows that, but under CEQA, a public agency cannot commit to doing a project like that's being proposed by the school district until it completes CEQA review. So I'm not sure if that's been done. That's kind of an indirect way of me responding that I don't think there would be any legal prohibition on the school district acquiring the property, even if it's their proposed use is not consistent with our zoning. They theoretically could lease it out to a farmer or do other things. So I don't think it would necessarily be unlawful, but what we're saying is their proposed use...
Okay, you cut out, Jeff. Okay. Are you still with us, Jeff? Apparently not. Okay, I'll consider my question answered at any rate.
Chair King?
Yes.
If I could just piggyback on what Mr. Barnes said, aren't there categorical, I think categorical exemptions that school districts can rely on with regard to the CEQA question?
I think we've...
Chair King, Commissioner Adukas, there, as lead agency for preparing an environmental document under CEQA, that lead agency would have to make that determination and evaluate what they believe the scope of the project. So as Mr. Barnes was describing, if someone was just purchasing property and leasing it for continued agricultural operations, that may very well not trigger, be defined as a project under CEQA, and there may not be an analysis other than an exemption. But it really is the lead agency to make that determination based upon the scope of what's being proposed at the time of the action they would be taking as a school district.
Okay, and it appears that Council Barnes has returned. We lost you for a bit.
Yeah, that was strange. Sorry, I think I was rambling too much, so Zoom gave me the boot.
I don't think that was the case at all. Okay. I think that was my biggest question. Comment, and it appears that the school district may have believed that this property was in the sphere of influence of the City of Oxnard, which staff have demonstrated it is not. So it came to us late, but we are still within the 45-day threshold to issue our report back to the Rio School District. Were that any other questions? Any comments from the public yet received?
Nope, still no public comments.
Do we have to make disclosures? I don't know if it's appropriate.
Oh, you know, I forgot to ask, but I'll do so now.
You don't have to?
No, this is, it's basically kind of like a report and file, and, I mean, yeah, something like this doesn't happen every day. Your commission could theoretically send it back for more review, but it's not a quasi-judicial hearing, so you don't need to give disclosures.
Okay, good, because I would hate to think I screwed that one up, too. Okay, well, if there are no comments from anyone else and no questions from the commission, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and confine comments to the commission for deliberation and/or emotion on the matter.
I'll move the recommended actions by staff. Oh, sorry.
Hang on. Commissioner McPhail? Oh, you're saying you'll second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Adukas, second by Commissioner McPhail. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Adukas?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, then I'm sure that the staff will then convey their report to the Rio School District. Moving along, my understanding is that we have postponed to a date uncertain Agenda Item Seven at the request of the applicant, or appellant in this case. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair King.
Okay, then moving along to Item Eight, I will turn it back over to Director Ward.
Thank you, Chair King. So I have a report back on some of the Board of Supervisors hearings. We have been very busy the last month and a half here with various projects. So we completed our review of the housing elements, the draft elements, before the Board. We had public engagement with additional suggestions on ways to add and expand upon our technical background report that accompanies the housing element, plus review of the draft policies. And some suggestions were incorporated, including focus related to a farm worker housing study as one of the key programs, as an implementation item of the new housing element. And we have now packaged up this draft that needs to go to the state, Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, that has a required preliminary 60-day review of a draft housing element. So that's the stage we're in right now, as well as progressing on the environmental review that will accompany the housing element. So the housing team is very busy working on those components, and then we have a target date of coming. And then we have a target date of coming to the planning commission for your official recommendation on the new element in July. We have also done our work plan review to the board of supervisors. This is articulating for my first time as the director. Our next big chunk of time spent working on various policy and ordinances. Finishing up various projects that have been in the pipeline for the last couple of years. We have a lot of activity heading your way in the summer months for your role. And also looking at the new general plan and identifying the items that need to be worked on in the early years of that new policy document. So the board did give direction and support of the work plan, which will be essentially the six months we're in right now, plus the additional two fiscal years. And so our next step on that is the budget process with the board that will be happening during the months of May and June. We also did a review related to the Nyland Acres as a possible cannabis retail operation. Something that the community of Nyland, Nyland Promise, a nonprofit group in trying to propose ways in which they can direct resources back into the community. And so that topic has been at the board a couple of times in trying to identify if that was something that would move forward. The board ultimately gave a direction not to support from our work plan item for the staff to work on an ordinance changes to accommodate the use. But in part, it was based upon who would be funding the effort. Since that time, I have had some discussions back with the community and potential operator. And so there are discussions right now occurring if this would be funded privately to go through the legislative changes for a rezone and development, development standards and the processes that might allow that. So that is still being considered and would need to go back to the board of supervisors to have an official screening. When we have a privately initiated legislative change. That first up is a screening by the board of supervisors. So that may be what occurs on that one, but I'll let you know as that progresses. We also heard the non coastal ordinance landscape ordinance. This was something back in December, I believe, was at your commission. So that was favorably reviewed by the board. And so that is now in effect. And we're working on our implementation components of that. We also originally heard the AT&amp;T Muscle Shoals appeal, the wireless project that I think even, I can't remember if Commissioner Garcia or Boyston, they may not have been on the seated on the planning commission when we heard that, but that was one that was before the planning commission twice during last year. And it was a denial. Well, it was a two, two ultimately by the planning commission. And so then it did move on as an appeal by the wireless carrier to the board. And the board also denied the project. So that happened on March 9. We also heard the Duffy appeal. You might remember that one. That was for a reasonable accommodation request in the La Conchita area. And the board also denied that appeal. Board heard a major modification to the Tolan landfill conditional use permits and for a time extension. This project was originally before the board of supervisors as a decision maker. And so that's why it returned directly to the board for this action. And that project involved a lot of coordination with community stakeholders and neighbors in trying to address potential nuisance issues. And so the board actually held two hearings in regards to that project. And a lot of good staff work from my staff and spending a lot of time reaching out to neighbors. And we made some modifications with, in support by the landfill operator as well to modify some conditions that we hope will make this a better project as it moves forward. And we will continue to coordinate with neighbors in that regard. We provided our 2020 general plan annual progress report. In fact, Planner Deutsch, he just had her today. That was one of his other key projects. So he's been busy these last few months. And that's the annual requirement that we provide to the state, the status of how we're doing on our general plan. Which for us, last year was very momental, getting the general plan approved for our comprehensive update. But it also is tied to our housing element and our status of how we've implemented the development of our housing units as well as how we've progressed on various programs in the housing element itself. So while we are doing double duty the last year or so on getting up to speed for the new element that goes along with it, we also still must implement our current element. So we've been making progress there and you will actually be seeing a program fairly soon here in regards to updating farm worker housing regulations. And that is one of our final programs from the current element to conclude this calendar year. And let me see here. We also, just on Tuesday. We reviewed the ordinance amendments to the non coastal ordinance related to the rooster regulations and the setbacks to in-ground swimming pools. And the revision and expiration date of zone clearances. And so that was recently at your commission as well. So as you can see, we are busy here these days. Next up for your planning commission in May will be May 20th as your next meeting. This will be hearing an appeal for planning director's determination for a request of authorizing a single family dwelling accessory structures and lot line adjustment. And expletory water well in the coastal zone area of the Santa Monica Mountains. Looking ahead at this point, although things can sometimes change, at this point, we don't have anything for your commission in June. But we would on July 1st. And that will be our next round of non coastal zoning ordinance amendments. We are packaging these in stages. So this will be a larger package of changes than, than what you recently reviewed in regards to the roosters and the in-ground swimming pools and zoning clearance process. And that's where we're at. Thank you very much.
Okay. Questions? Anything from the commission members they wish to introduce? Well, then this will be one of the shortest meetings in my memory. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Is there a second? The motion.
I'll second.
You don't need to move closing. That's, that's entirely in your power, Commissioner King or Chair King.
Well, you know, I can't handle that much power. Commissioner Adukas, at any rate, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Hey, well.